Hello, everyone. Welcome. My name is Umi and I'm the campaign manager. I want to thank everyone for being here, for coming out, for joining us on this lovely Sunday afternoon. We appreciate all of your support, so thank you so much. We're gonna have some excellent speakers today. We're gonna start off with Tatanka, who is a longtime supporter of the campaign. He's a local poet and humanitarian. Jim Weller, who's won many community awards around sanctuary city and immigration. And then we have Sally, who is part of the campaign team. She's a recent UCSC grad. She's the campus coordinator for the campaign and she's gonna be talking about responsibility in local politics. Then we also have Sandy Brown and Chris Crone, who are local city council members. And we're so honored to have them here today. And then we will close up with Drew giving a talk for a few minutes. And we're gonna round up the event at three. And then, well, before we get into all of this, I just wanted to take a minute and talk about why I'm here, why I joined the campaign, and why Drew being on the city council is so important to me. This is a little bit of a sensitive topic, so I want to give a trigger warning before I begin. Two months ago, I found out that there is no START program in Santa Cruz. START stands for the Sexual Assault Response Team. So after a person is sexually assaulted, they get hauled across the 17th Highway in the back of a police car to Santa Clara to get a rape test. This test is the only way to preserve crucial DNA evidence, to have accountability for perpetrators, and to get justice for the survivor. It's pretty inhumane to tell the survivor of an assault that we don't have the empathy, the resources, and the medical care necessary in Santa Cruz. That's why this campaign is dedicated to public safety. All of us want a safer Santa Cruz. And as Drew, as a commissioner for the prevention of violence against women, he's committed to making the city safer for our families, for women, for all of us. So that's why I'm part of this campaign, that's why I'm here volunteering. And I hope to see all of you volunteering for the campaign and continuing to show up for our events. And so, that's that. And I would like to invite our next speaker. With that, we're gonna have Tatanka.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, first of all, I wanna just take a moment, I'll take a breath, give our gratitude to the people who came before us, the Aloni people, the Castanueva people, the Indian Canyon people, who really knew how to respect this land and each other. May we learn from them. And thank you Creator for the sunshine, for the ocean, for all the four worlds and our place in it. And I hope... So Drew's someone who knows that humanity is not all there is in creation. He's given himself a good part of his time to preserve the bees among us and to get Project Pollinate, the whole concept that, yes. Well, I mean, Project Pollinate, that we don't exist if our ecosystem doesn't exist, right? And we're not gonna exist if we don't learn to get along with each other. So he's here definitely representing the underserved populations and voices in this community, but he's thinking about all of us. So, and so is Justin Cummings. The two of them are running together. We need a progressive city council. And Justin is here. Everybody know, right here. If you haven't met Justin, introduce yourself to him as well. So, he just said to welcome and say hi and welcome everybody. And if I had some poem or something, I left everything in my car. I didn't know I was gonna be on so quick, so here I am. I'm thinking like, the whole notion of all of us being a part, all of us being a part of something larger. One of the first things that came to me in my early twenties when I was working with the United Farm Workers Union, and the magic of that union and what they were doing, what Cesar and Deloris were doing. So, this poem came out. This is about forty-five years ago, I think. "Once upon an earth, when things were tense, when people were fighting, not making much sense of why they were born with so many wrongs. Why we were born with so many wrongs. Once upon that earth, there were real live songs." Thank you, Aretha. "They woke up in the morning like everyone else and spent the day traveling from house to house, bringing people together deep inside, where laughings looked and cryings hide, where truth and fiction traveled side by side, stopping to eat, bumming a ride, coast to coast to coast, to shore to shore, till people danced and sang and swore that there was something better than war. Better than our federal government would have us believe, more powerful than its power to deceive. Better than the corporations would have us believe, more powerful than their power to deceive. Better than our own pretender voices would have us believe, more powerful than our power to self-deceive. Better than best, worse than none, all were equal, all were one, all were best, were worst. Made sense. Once upon an earth, when things were tense."
Okay, who's next? Jim. Paging Jim Weller to the stage. There he is. So for those of you that don't know Jim, he, if you want to, we have the option. It's okay if you don't yet to talk until he did either. So, you know, this is Jim Weller. He does a lot of great work in the community, across different borders, from the spiritual community to the immigration community, to all kinds of stuff. So, it's an honor to have you with us. Jim?
Thank you, Drew. Well, hello, everyone. I was thinking it would be a great story if I could say that I got up on top of Curtis' trailer to make a speech, but, I don't know. Curtis, I'm ten years older than you are and a little more cautious. But, at any rate, I am, I guess, best described as a community organizer. I'm a clergy person. That means I'm a religious person and a committed Christian, which makes me a member of a distinct minority in this community, which is fine. But I'm also not your average Christian clergyman. I am a socialist, communist sympathizer from the Diapers. And my belief, my firm belief, is that the very heart of Christianity, and you might not know it from looking around, is a moral and ethical commitment to the poor and the marginalized in society. That's really, that's really what it's all about, that's all it amounts to. In my point of view, it doesn't matter what you believe religiously. It doesn't matter what creed you affirm religiously. What matters to the heart of humanity and to the heart of human religion is that you care for the poor and the needy. That's it. And so, my calling, as a religious person and a community minister, if you will, though I have no church authority, is to carry out what the Roman Catholic Church, generations ago, declared to be its primary social ethic, which is called the preferential option for the poor. And what it says is that throughout all of human organizations, all societies, all political systems, we all should first take care of those who are poor and oppressed and deprived. And God knows that in our society, that amounts to more than half of the population. So, that's where I'm coming from. I'm also committed to Santa Cruz as my hometown. I've lived here for a long time, although I've been other places. I don't plan to leave anytime soon. And for the last three city council elections, I've been very active in doing my part to try to help elect an effective working majority who will commit itself to the preferential option for the poor, bottom line. And so, two years ago, I enthusiastically supported my friend Drew Glover here, who very nearly was elected. And I'm very happy to be supporting him again because I'm 100% confident he will be elected this time. And in addition to that, we're in an even better situation because we also have now Justin Cummings, who is equally as worthy as Drew Glover, fits into the same category in my mind, being idealistic, young people who share my values, and who are younger than I am. And more energetic and more enthusiastic and hopefully less jaded by living in this evil world than I am. And so, I support them both enthusiastically and doing everything I can, from opening my pocketbook to helping them campaign. I want to see them both elected. And I look forward to next year having a solid majority of four with our friends Chris Crone and Sandy Brown on the Santa Cruz City Council to start making a difference where it's really needed. Because I've said it before and I'm just gonna say it again. I told you that I've always been a socialist and a communist sympathizer. I still believe that Karl Marx was right about his primary critique of society, that what life in any human society, in any human economy that we've known in the last several centuries is all about is a class struggle.
That's right.
It is a class struggle for life and for the benefits of life between those who have more than they need and those who have not. And we're seeing that played out in a way here in Santa Cruz that couldn't be more clear when it comes to this rent control issue. The rent control measure, in my opinion, and I know we're not here to campaign for that, but I favor it, is, in my opinion, a modest and measured approach to solving some of the critical problems of those among us who are lacking in the power to avail ourselves of the benefits of our economy. And so, again, this is another, this is another issue that's important to these two candidates. And so, I just want to say that I'm very glad to be supporting them and I'm looking forward to their being elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Wonderful. So, next, we have someone from our campaign team. I met her when I went to go and do a presentation for the UCSC Dems, which was great. And then she joined the campaign team, our campus coordinator, Sally Richardson. We got a trucker.
Hi, friends. Can you all hear me? Is it okay? All right, so my name's Sally. I'm up here today because there are really two sources of power in this world. And we already know this. There's money is the first one. And that is what we already have on the city council. Most of the city council candidates, a number of them running, are backed by Santa Cruz Together. Have anyone heard of Santa Cruz Together?
Yeah, I've heard of it.
Who are funded by California Realtors Association, so you can imagine how they lie. We really have a Goliath fight against us and it's going to take every single one of you to get them out there. We're gonna need every single one of you to have a yard sign in your car or your front yard. And we're absolutely gonna need every single one of you to have a meet and greet at your house. Has anyone heard of a meet and greet before? Fantastic. We'll bring the food, UCSC's bring the food, you know, it's what we do. So, yeah, that's really all I have to say. There's two sources of money, of power in this world. And it's money and it's people. And it's clear by what we see today that we have the people. The people brought the food, they brought the candidates, they brought the fan. We have paid almost nothing for this today and it's been really fantastic. So, keep showing up, keep showing up. Sign up up here, get a yard sign, get a yard sign for Drew, get a yard sign for Justin. Come up here and do the work. We need you to walk on Sundays. We need you to put a yard sign out. We need you to have meet and greets. Yeah. When the people don't stand up, the money will. So, please rise up. It doesn't take long. Thank you. You gonna lead me up here?
Where's Sandy Brown?
Just make them all go on the truck.
Can we get a round of applause for Sally? So, next, we've heard from, you know, humanitarians and activists and students. So, now for the elected official vibe, right? So that we can show that we're not just civilians. We have people that are in positions of power that also support what we're trying to do. So, this is someone who was one of the first people for this campaign this year to go out and knock on doors with me. And I can't tell you how powerful it is. Exactly. Give a hand, a round of applause. How powerful it is to have a city council member come with you to a door and say, "Hey, I'm a city council member. I want you to vote for this guy for city council." It works really well. So, without further ado, I want to give big props and appreciation to Sandy Brown.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. This is, I'm really excited to be on top of Curtis Rellford's wonderful, wonderful peace wagon, expression of all the things, all the values, all the good things about this community, creating community. And it's good to see you all here. I am really pleased to be part of Drew's campaign. Walking with him is really fun. I'll just say that upfront. So, all of you, get ready. Go walk with Drew. He's great. We know he's great, but he's great at the doors. It's fun. So, I want to just say a couple of things about, you know, why I support Drew. Obviously, for many of the reasons you all do. I think his values really reflect the kinds of things we care about. His commitment to doing his work, being very deliberate about that, doing it with compassion and in support of social and environmental justice. He is a leader. He's an activist. And that's what we need on our city council right now, more than ever. So, I'm supporting Drew because of his values. I'm supporting him because I know that he will be a solid vote for holding developers accountable on affordable housing developments. For too long, they have been getting out of even the minimal requirements we have. We need help in that arena. He will also help us protect tenants in this community. And he will help us open the bathrooms if we can't do that sooner, among other things. It's on my mind today. And I think we, none of us can really hold it for that long. But it would be nice if we could actually, we wouldn't be even talking about this if Drew Glover and Justin Cummings were on the city council. This would not be a real challenge to address. So, those are the kinds of things that I really want to work with Drew on. Land use and planning, all the kind of, you know, the boring things. I think he'll just get in there and roll up his sleeves with us. And he will also listen to the community and reflect that back in his actions on the council. So, thank you, Drew, for inviting me up here today. And I'm gonna let Chris Crone take the next, take the mic and he'll hold forth some more. I can't help but say.
Something in between. My name is Chris Crone. I'm on the Santa Cruz City Council. And I just want to acknowledge the brand-new council. And I don't know if Steve Schnarr left yet. Steve, where are you? Steve, did you leave? Steve? There he is. He's going to run a rent control walk right now. So, if you want to sign up to run, walk the neighborhoods, you can go with Steve Schnarr. Brand-new council does not leave any campaigner, any city council member on the campaign battlefield. That's why Drew Glover is back. I've got a few things I want to say. Bear with me. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Drew and his story, a little bit about what's ahead of us and what the issues are in this campaign. We all have a story. This city has a story too. And who will get to tell that next chapter? Well, I'm dreaming that the next chapter will be written by all of us. Can you dream with me?
Oh, yeah.
Got a prop, got a prop. To dream. Can you dream with me? I also know that dreaming of Drew Glover on the city council is not enough. I, for one, am willing to work my ass off to help the Drew Glover story succeed and that his narrative be added to the Santa Cruz narrative. Are you? Drew was born in Santa Cruz. He was raised by a single mom. He was class president at Harbor High School. He graduated in feminist studies from Cabrillo College. And remember, he almost graduated. He just reminded me. But he studied feminist studies at Cabrillo College. And remember, he almost, or he came in fifth in a field of 11 candidates in a four-person seat council race in 2016. Don't forget that. Drew has other stories too. He has stories that involve causes greater than himself and how he makes those groups and organizations greater, even greater. He's president of the United Nations Association. Executive director of Project Pollinate. He's a staff member of the Resource Center for Nonviolence. And we know how important that group is in this community. And it's actually a nationwide group. It's recognized nationwide, the Resource Center for Nonviolence. He's been appointed as a member of the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. And he also just happens to be a practitioner and a student of kinging in nonviolence. Drew Glover. Isn't this the resume we want for the next city council member? This is a man that not only dreams, he is a consummate doer too. So, just one more story. How I met Drew, or at least, yeah, maybe how I met him. I was standing in line to talk about the Bearcat and how bad that would be for this community. I was standing next to Tim Fitzmaurice. Drew happened to be behind me and Tim. And up comes former deputy chief of police, Steve Clark. Steve Clark proceeded to yell at Tim Fitzmaurice. He ignored me. We both spoke about the Bearcat, but I guess he thought he had a little bit of truck with Tim. And how could Tim possibly speak against the Bearcat? The police really needed this Bearcat tank. And Drew was listening to all this. And after Clark walks away, Drew goes, "Who was that?" And I said, "It was the deputy chief of police," because he was in a suit that day. And Drew was like, "Whoa." And what did he do? He went and immediately filed a complaint with the police department. And guess what? Deputy chief of police, Clark, is all gone. And we're still here. And how about sending the Bearcat back to Washington DC and to Homeland Security? That should be an issue in this campaign. It was an issue in the last campaign. We should not give up until that happens. I have a sign. A little bit of wordplay here. Sorry about the knocking around. I was thinking about dreaming and doing. And I have this sign that said, "Dreaming plus, plus doing equals Drew-ing." Are you with me? We can do this. We can do this. So Drew has not only been dreaming of forming a city council majority, he's been doing something about it. Like walking his environmental talk as he meets voters at their homes and in neighborhoods across Santa Cruz. He's repurposing yard signs. This is a repurposed yard sign. He's not, he's not gonna throw more yard signs in the landfill. He's not gonna buy them and throw them away. He's been foregoing wasteful mailings. You know, most campaigns do two, three mailings. And you see what comes to your mailbox, right? He's gonna reach people in different ways. And you gotta help him do that through social media, through walking neighborhoods. And he's also implementing a voter-first strategy that he's gonna tell you about in a few minutes. Let's be honest. Electing Drew and Justin Cummings would put values over the vomit of the market-rate housing situation we see right now in Santa Cruz. And it would place community ahead of the reality TV show of real estate ranting that we hear all the time. They've already sent me two mailings. I don't know about you. And it would create a city council that the tenant, there would be pro-tenant, pro-student, and pro-neighborhood. And yes, pro-homeowner as well. And what would having a city council majority actually mean? Because we've trusted politicians before, right? You know that. I can't, I'm gonna, and we've definitely been disappointed as well. Well, can you dream of a city council buying buses and bikes instead of Bearcat tanks? Can you dream of a city council standing shoulder to shoulder with students and tenants and neighborhoods and working with a new rent board instead of allowing developers to build ever more market-rate housing? I think we can make that a reality with Justin and Drew. Can you dream of a city council voting to purchase the Beach Flats Garden along Third Street instead of another parking garage on Cedar Street? Can you dream of a city council led by Drew and Justin and Sandy Brown? Imagine them, and imagine them leading the city and not the city manager. The city manager wants, you know, a shopping center on the wharf. He wants a parking garage. He's gonna build a parking garage and it's already obsolete. And of course, he wants more market-rate housing. Can you imagine that? He even wants luxury, he wants luxury condos and he dreams of restaurants on top of the luxury condo, rooftop restaurants. That's what he talks about. The last one. Can you dream of Drew, Justin, and Sandy sitting across the table from George Blumenthal? And demanding that students be housed on campus? And that campus rents come down? And that there be no more growth beyond 19,500? Are we dreaming or can we do this? We can drew it. Drew cannot do it alone. He needs your creativity and your energy. This fall, we can, we can turn this dream into a Santa Cruz narrative and turn this council around. Elect Drew and Justin and pass Measure M, the rent control ballot initiative locally. And also repeal the onerous Costa Hawkins, which is Prop 10 on your state ballot. We can do this. And we can give Santa Cruzans a real fighting chance at forming a diverse community instead of just talking about it. Thank you, Drew Glover, for running for city council. I love the speech and the fact that you brought props. That's beautiful. Props and a new slogan slash saying, "Drew-ing." I'm gonna keep on Drew-ing. Keep on Drew-ing. Keep on Drew-ing. Oh, that's gonna go for, go long. It's gonna go long. Okay. So, the last speaker before I speak on speaking, speaking stuff, is going to be Curtis Rellford. I got John talking in another one next month. We do also have John Brown Childs here. I want to give him some props. For those who don't know him, check him out. He's amazing. But Curtis is someone that represents humanitarianism to me to the T, right? To the letter. He sacrifices his time and energy to do some amazing stuff and make life better for other people that he may have never, ever met before. And even putting himself in a position to be targeted for trying to spread love, joy, peace, and compassion here in Santa Cruz. I'm gonna talk about that later during my talk. So, I'm gonna turn this over to him and see what the spirit is saying to him. If we know Curtis, we know we're gonna hear the spirit. And I'm honored. Hello. Welcome to the picnic. Born ready. Without further ado.
Hi. Before I talk, I be trying to look at everybody and get present with everybody that's here. My name's Curtis Rellford. And I support this man because I saw him in action. I'm about action and I notice the people who just don't give lip service. I saw him five years ago when it started. And I saw him down in those trenches, talking about helping people, helping the homeless and picking up this paper. Man, why you picking up all that paper? Dude, I grew from just watching this man and being able to do what I'm doing. And I burned this sage just because I respect the Native Americans who have really gave me a lot. me a lot of presence and a real lot of how to take care of their earth. How to take care of the trees, how to take care of you, just to focus in on why am I here, what am I doing, where am I going? And these answers have been given to me through these folks by doing their originals. My deepest fear is not that I'm inadequate. My deepest fear is I'm powerful beyond measure. It is my light, not my darkness, that most frighten me. And I ask myself, who am I to be brilliant? Gorgeous? Talented?
You're beautiful.
My plan small does not serve the world. There's nothing enlightening about shrieking so that other people won't feel insecure around me. We were all meant to shine, as childrens do. We was born to make manifest the glory of God that is within us. And it's not just in some of us, it's in everyone. And as I let my own light shine, I unconsciously give other people permission to do the same. As we liberate our own fears, our presence automatically liberate others. And I'll take that to my grave. And what I'm doing, what I discover within me, I'm growing through you all because you encouraged me to be here supporting Drew. And I think it's so important that Drew be in that city council, y'all. I thank each and every one of us. We all can't help everyone, but we all can help someone. And if we all help Drew go out there and get two or three more people to come here and be fired up like we are, y'all, we gotta make a difference. It gotta make a difference. And I'm making a stand for what I believe in by doing everything in my power to bring some noise and some awareness. It ain't noise, it ain't music, that's a prayer you hear when you see me coming. I'm praying for your ass. And I just say that like that because that's where I'm from. And Drew, he's from a place, man, that he could do this job. And if we was all behind him and get triple X people behind him, we could make this happen. We can make this happen. Y'all, come on. Jurn hands, jurn this man on the journey of kindness. That's what he stand for. Peace, love, compassion. He was telling me about them signs. I said, "Man, should I put all these signs?" And he say he's all about peace and love. All about it. And when you can feel it in your chest, you know it's real. You know it's real when you feel it in your chest, not your head. It's real, y'all. So that's my little 2%. Yeah, respect. Yeah, I got all the respect in the world for you, Drew, and what he's going for. And all what Chris was talking about, the other guy, I don't know him, but I know what I just saw in Drew.
We gotta get you to know Justin too.
Justin too is in the house.
Raise your hand, Justin. Justin, who are you?
Justin, I'm sorry, brother. Ain't no party like a Justin party 'cause the Justin party don't stop. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. We got Justins in the house. We got Justins in the house. Backing up is Drew, all you said to me. Ain't no party like a Drew's party 'cause the Drew's party don't stop. Ain't no party like a Drew's party 'cause the Drew's party don't stop. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Drew, you better take this thing.
Curtis Rellifer, everybody. Okay, wow, exactly. So without him, we wouldn't have our stage either. So, anyhow. And if y'all don't know the work that Curtis does, you should check out the work that Curtis does. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit later and how important it is. So I'm gonna introduce the next speaker, which is me. Not gonna make anyone climb up here and all that stuff, which is nice. And I have so much to say and I put it all together. I wanna make sure I'm not gonna forget anything. So I'm gonna look at my phone every once in a while, but don't think it's not because I don't love you. I've been thinking about this stuff a lot.
We won't be confused.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. So I just wanna start by saying, "Good afternoon."
Good afternoon!
Okay. I just wanna say by saying, "Good afternoon." Yes, exactly. Participation and engagement, that's what I love to see. And I wanna just acknowledge all of you for being out here today on a Sunday. Or as they say, "I see you," right? "I see you out here on a Sunday," talking about local progressive politics and how we can see a positive shift in Santa Cruz. Now, today is an important day. Not only is it because we're kicking off our campaign, but today, the 19th of August, is World Humanitarian Day. Correct, right? And we chose today particularly because it was World Humanitarian Day. And we chose this venue particularly because it was World Humanitarian Day. This is the London Nelson Community Center. Yes. And I say that and I get some weird looks sometimes because people are like, "Wait a minute, isn't it Louden Nelson?"
No.
His name was London. And when I talk to people on the street, the majority of people don't even know who he was or what he did. So I'll give you a quick update. He was an African-American slave that was born in North Carolina. He was brought out to California during the Gold Rush as a slave and then became free, acquired land here in Santa Cruz. And then when he died in 1860, he donated all of his land and money to the city of Santa Cruz's school systems. So it came out to be about $350, but that totally refunded the school system and allowed it to reopen. So the property and the deal was, is that the property or the money would be used to benefit the continual education of future generations. So it's interesting though, because in the 1930s, there was a clerical switch where they changed his name to Louden for some reason. And even though historians acknowledge that his name was London, they have yet to change it. I mention these, I mention this because stories are important, because history is important. It shows us where we're coming from, but also how not to make the same mistakes that we've made in the past. Right. I'm gonna share a couple of stories with you and just to be warned, they're a little heavy. Stories like in 1877 when two Spanish-speaking Native American, people of Native American descent were hung from the Water Street Bridge by their necks. Do you know that? So a lot of people don't know that. And it was because according to newspaper clippings, they attacked and murdered a white man for $8 so they could go to the circus, which is really interesting. They were hung around 2:00 AM, but their bodies were left hanging on the bridge until the morning when people could come and take pictures with them. So there's a historic picture of about a little over a dozen Santa Cruz members standing around their hanging bodies, just to be cautious about that. Their names were Francisco Arias and Jose Camalas. Their names were also altered a lot during publications in the history. And the planning department has been approached many times by local advocates trying to get a plaque to put on the bridge to commemorate that so that people can be aware of it, but they have yet to do it. Or like the stories of the Chinese-American populations here that came to build the railroads. Even though that they built the railroads, I don't know if you know this, but they brought with them in the railroads a big boom of economic prosperity in Santa Cruz. But with that, they felt they faced racism and anti-immigration laws, which then pushed the people that built the infrastructure that brought the economy to Santa Cruz farther and farther out of the city. So they went from Pacific Avenue to Front Street till eventually the Chinatown that existed on the banks of the San Lorenzo River that was flooded and destroyed in 1955. The lessons that I learned from these events and which I hope you take away from them also is that we need to treat people better. A lot has changed in Santa Cruz though since the late 1800s. There's more people, there's more resources, and there are more complicated problems to solve. There are the obvious ones, like housing and transportation, but then there are the ones that are harder to see. The problems that impact people on an individual level and sometimes make it impossible to survive here in Santa Cruz. But a lot of people might ask, "What are those invisible problems that I'm talking about?" Well, let's start here at the community center. I want everyone to take a second to look around and see if there's anything that you noticed that's out of place, that doesn't belong in the picture.
Fence, fence!
The fence, exactly. So the fence is, when I was writing this, it kinda reminded me of something, right? The fence reminds me of the wall, right? It's the same, for all intents and purposes, the same kind of ideology. Keep those people out of this space so that these people can feel safer, even though they have more money and resources. The six-foot wrought iron fence, which is standing between you and me right now, you and I, you and me, which is it?
Me.
You and I.
Yeah, okay, you and me, right now. There are three others like it at the Riverside Gardens, Grant Street Park, and Star of the Sea, and they've gone up over the last three years. These solutions do not address housing inequity in Santa Cruz. The fence that costs tens of thousands of dollars, $40,000 this fence costs, tens of thousands of dollars, and the others like it don't address the issues of wealth inequality or increased access to good or living wage jobs. They don't support community, exactly. They don't support community programs that provide the means for people to manage their issues of drug addiction and mental health needs. Because in reality, they're not solutions, they're reactions, right? To a much larger problem. Instead of putting up barriers, I'm coming from a place where I believe our city council should be bringing people together around the issue of homelessness and houselessness and implementing solutions beyond commissions and recommendations. Solutions that use the money we have in the budget effectively so that we can maximize the impact for every dollar. Not spending $90,000 a month to keep 60 people out of the over 1,000 people in Santa Cruz that are experiencing homelessness behind barbed wire fence on the outskirts of tents. So in other words, we need to do more with less, and that's what this campaign is all about. And if you were shocked by that, you were absolutely right. You heard me when I said that it was $90,000 per month to keep 60 people in tents. That breaks down to $1,500 per month per person, and that is about twice as much rent as I pay to house someone in a tent. It's even more insane to keep someone in a tent, right? For someone to live in a tent. Each one of those fences that I mentioned earlier, the four different ones, have cost between $25,000 and $40,000 each, each, to install. So let's do the math really quick. Four fences, which is average them at $20,000 each, that's $80,000 over the last three years that we've spent on fencing. And if we don't, you know, if we start counting in March, which is when they relocated the encampment from San Lorenzo Park over to River Street, let's just start in March and not even include the money that was associated with the experiment in San Lorenzo Park at $90,000 a month, we have spent $630,000 on the camp since March. $630,000 for 60 people to live in a tent. So if you add that together with the tents and the barbed wire and the fences, the city has spent, as of right now, according to numbers reported by the Santa Cruz Sentinel, $710,000 to deal with the homeless issue. Just thinking about it makes my head kinda go woo, you know? Like what is going on with those ideals? So like was mentioned before, and thank you Chris for bringing it up, is I work at the Resource Center for Nonviolence and I train in the philosophies and methodologies of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who is one of my personal heroes. It's been transformative in the last couple of years that I've been able to dedicate study in his work and his approach towards problems. And one of my favorite quotes that I don't hear nearly enough is that "A budget is a moral document." Because you can tell where a city's priorities are based off of where we put our money. The reality about that is no different here in Santa Cruz. So get ready, hold on to your seats. When we see a 49% increase in the city's Director of Finance, a six-figure salary received a 49% increase over the last five years, while at the same time the city is declaring a fiscal emergency and trying to add regressive sugar taxes onto the ballot, which always regressive tax disproportionately impact low-income people. There's something wrong with our priorities. When our city manager has made over $1.3 million over the past five years, but community programs that offer nutrition programs for newborns, Meals on Wheels programs for the elderly, and services for veterans are being slashed and almost threatened completely. I was talking to the CEO of Grey Bears, or the Executive Director of Grey Bears, and they went from $25,000 and it got cut to $15,000, and this year they tried to completely cut their budget. And those are people that are serving, our seniors in our community, age 60 to 75, that are looking for food and housing and transportation and medical services. So we get back to this idea of doing more with less and being more responsible. And those yard signs that you see around are an example of what we're doing. And I wanna just give props to our community partners that have helped us to devise that as well as our volunteers. Because those are yard signs from the June 2018 elections for the candidates that ran then. We took them, 2018, this June. Yeah, we absorbed those signs. And so we've gone through so many different forms of beta testing of those signs to figure out what will work. And we've ended with these, what I would consider very attractive-looking purple and white signs, which are amazing, right? The key is that we're not having to print more of those signs, which means that we're keeping the 200 to 500 yard signs that we would've bought out of the environment because that rigid plastic is incredibly hard to buy. Not to mention that by the time we're done with the signs, it will come out to cost about half as much as if we would've outright bought the signs. So not only do they represent sustainability, not only do they represent fiscal responsibility, but they represent a shift in the mindset of how we approach problems in Santa Cruz. Are we looking for the easiest and most expensive way to solve our problems? Or are we gonna really dig down into the problem, figure out solutions through trial and error, and then come out the other side with something that works not only for the environment, for our budget, and ideally for the citizens that live here in Santa Cruz? Boom. So let's get back to the park. So we're here, and as I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the program, there are no bathrooms available. If we have enough money to put fences up and give city management raises, why don't we have enough money to provide 24-hour bathrooms to our community living outside or in our house? Anyhow. So right now on a Sunday in a publicly funded park, there are no bathrooms. None available to anybody that wants to come in. I wrote "none," zip, nada, zero bathrooms on a Sunday. So just to emphasize the point, there are no bathrooms. The closest one, if you're lucky, you could use the taqueria. If you're able-biding, you could walk down to Saturn Cafe, but beyond that, I don't know where there's another bathroom around here. The Begori, the Begori is over there too, for anyone that need to use the bathroom. So when the center is open though, they've implemented a only certain people can use the bathroom policy, which is strange to have a publicly funded community center not allow people to use the bathroom. And so this is indicative of a much larger problem. But I agree, I think we all can agree, that Santa Cruz is in the midst of a mental health and addiction crisis. And this place houses the teen center. So it's really important that we're able to provide safe and secure spaces for people to be able to learn and grow. But that doesn't mean that we can do that while leaving the people outside, out of our minds and not thinking about their needs as well. If we're going to restrict indoor bathroom use, the city must offer alternatives. Advocates have spoken out about the need for more porta-potties in downtown because it's a humanitarian issue, but it's also a public safety issue. There have been stories published by the Sentinel about people coming to the center here, being turned away from using the bathroom, and then having to turn around and go to the bathroom on the lawn. There are people, there was another story that came out last week where someone was denied the use of the bathroom, so they tried to make it home. They got in their car and defecated in their car because they couldn't get home fast enough to go and use the bathroom. That's unacceptable. Not to mention, if people don't have access to bathrooms, it's not like people aren't going to go to the bathroom. They're gonna go in the bushes, on the sidewalk, in places where other people are gonna have to interact with it. We need to have things in a much higher priority of taking care of people that are underserved in our communities. We need to talk about human needs, and we need to talk about how our policies make people feel dehumanized. There are portable shower options, meal programs, storage programs that are already operating that haven't gotten support from the city. There are so many possible ways that we can humanize people, but instead we choose fences and restrictions and barbed wire tent camps. We have a problem with our priorities. The path we are on is not sustainable. Dr. King asked the question, "Where to now, chaos or community?" We're at a turning point in Santa Cruz. We have the opportunity to recalibrate our values and begin to prioritize people over the almighty dollar. You know what I think is kinda funny? Is that I met with the city manager, right, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago or something like that, and on his wall, there's a big whiteboard with all kinds of words and numbers and money values on it, and in the header, it says "Quality of Life Projects." And the whole time I was sitting there talking to him, the projects are like the parking garage or the wharf rebuild, where there's like $60 to $100 million that are just like trying to be planned into these projects. But I'm thinking to myself the whole time I'm talking to him, it's quality of life for who? Right? Like are we working to take care of the people that are in Santa Cruz now that need our support? Or are we trying to build infrastructure that's gonna invite people from other places to come to Santa Cruz and exacerbate our problems for people that live here in Santa Cruz?
We're selling out instead of selling up!
We are actively losing the soul of Santa Cruz. We are actively losing the soul of Santa Cruz. Uh, mainly the people of Santa Cruz. And there's a guy named Anthony that I met at the farmer's market. He's a community elder and a poet who's moving away to Arizona after living for decades in Santa Cruz, particularly because of the cost of housing. But mainly, he says, because it's the only place, get this, it's the only place where he has experienced this much racism, other than living in Texas. And he's an elderly, uh, Mesoamerican gentleman. Or the story of Abby, right, the eight-year-old girl who lives in a van with her mom and her two siblings, and feel, an eight-year-old who feels the need that she needs to use her talents to get a job, to help support her mom, to get rent, because her dad got arrested. Unacceptable. Eight-year-olds should not have to be thinking about this. We shouldn't be losing community elders and creative minds because they don't wanna be here because they don't feel welcome. And then we have people like Curtis, like, who, people like Curtis. This man changes my life every time he drives by. I work at the Resource Center for Nonviolence, and I'll hear reggae in the back of my head, and I'll stop, and I'll look out the window, and then Curtis will drive by, and it will make my day so much better, every time. Now, people, like I said before, dedicating his life to spreading peace, love, and compassion, but if you look inside his cab right here, he has enough, as many parking tickets you can, I can make a skirt out of them. It's crazy how many parking tickets. And you know what's ironic? Is that he's being charged with disturbing the peace. It reminds you, I mean, I don't know how much you study Dr. King, but that's the whole thing with Dr. King, is that he had this idea of what does peace mean? There's a difference between positive peace and negative peace. And in the words of Dr. King, "It is our obligation to disobey unjust laws." And if Curtis spreading love and joy is against the law, I think that we should disobey that
Mr. Glover, tear down that wall.
Tear down the fence. Tear down the fence. So, keep ons ruined. So, uh, that was a bunch of problems, right? But, there are some reasons that I'm running for city council outside of those. Those are some of the main reasons. I wanna see those changes happen. But it means a lot for me to see all of you out here today, because it means that you all care about some of these issues, too, if not all of them, because we work together in the community. And yes, it's frustrating and mind-boggling and disheartening and, you know, sometimes it just, like, I always say it makes me wanna tear my nonexistent hair out because I'm bald. But, uh, it's the perfect opportunity for us to start to change the narrative, right? The November election, we can have a city council that's not a reactionary body. This is, this is funny, but actually the antithesis of reactionary, which of course, according to the thesaurus, is radical and progressive. We can have a city council that promotes public safety by taking steps of prevention, not always looking at enforcement as a solution. A city council that represents the voice of the people, that amplifies the voice of the unheard and acts as a bridge to resolve conflicts in the community, instead of bringing people together around solutions, instead of polarizing the different communities against each other. Wise words from Dr. King, where we must learn to live together as brothers or we'll perish as fools. This November, we need to win. We're going to win. We have another city council candidate here, Mr. Doctor Justin Cummings, Ph.D. He plays that down a lot, and I was talking to someone, I was surprised you didn't put "Doctor Justin Cummings, Ph.D." for city council on your, on your, um, yard signs, because that's amazing. But, uh, a black man with a Ph.D. running for city council. Community organizers and doctors unite, right, coming together to make a positive impact, uh, this November. But what's more important, or equally important, just as important, as getting us elected this November, is to not stop in November. Because what, what I found, you know, in this process, running these last two times, is that everyone kind of checks out from local politics, until about August, right? And then the election's in November. So, if we're only engaged from August to November, that means we're only paying attention, really, for three months. We need a movement of people that are working consistently throughout the year to be aware of what's going on in the city, mobilize voters, and get people registered so that when it comes down to it, we're ready to mobilize, and if need to, shut things down. Because the way things are happening right now in the city is not sustainable, and we can't keep moving the way that we are. Uh, let's see, what else do I wanna tell you? Um, oh, haha, so a couple of you've asked me, um, where do I make donations? Ooh, okay, hold on. I'm not gonna ask you for money today. In fact, I don't, I ideally don't want your money, because we're running a campaign that's radically sustainable and people-oriented. So, instead of you giving us money, yes, thank you, exactly. I'm surprised it hasn't gotten more press yet, you know? It's like, come on, this is, we did some research, and this is like one of the first campaigns in this, in the country that's tried to do this, uh, this approach, and it's possible because of the power of community here in Santa Cruz. We are so connected within our circles here of the things that we wanna see happen. What we need to do is get out, knock on doors, and engage people, have events, and talk with people, even if they disagree with what we believe in, and find common ground to come together and vote together this November for a progressive or forward-thinking city council that will represent the majority of people. And, you know, without the money, we're able to not only protect the environment by not printing literally tens of thousands of mailers that are gonna go out and end up in the trash or the recycle, or even worse, the ocean, right? We're able to do things that can encourage people to give their money in other places. I don't want me, I don't wanna get elected because you gave me money and I bought people's attention. Like, there's something wrong with that to me. I would much rather you come and stand with me and work together so that we earn people's attention, and they can't ignore the campaign. It's not like, oh, okay, yeah, just someone running for city council, it's like, whoa, this person's running for city council, they represent what's at my core. Because if you talk to people walking doors, whether they're conservative, Republicans, Democrats, when I start talking to them, we are on the same level that we're not agreed with things that are going on in Santa Cruz. I've talked to someone that was a registered Republican, and he put a yard sign in his front yard. Heyo. We can't just book by their cover. But that is one of the reasons why we're not taking your money, and instead I wanna encourage you to do something that you feel is effective with your money. Find an organization, find someone, a local humanitarian, by chance, that you might wanna donate your money to, so that they can go and help other people in their lives and do things that you know are gonna be effective, instead of putting money into people's mailboxes, which is gonna ultimately end up in the trash. So, there are a lot of things that we can accomplish this November, I made a list of them, uh, because there are so many of them, and I don't wanna miss them. We can have truly affordable housing development. Oh, really? No one cares? Truly affordable housing development! An expanded public transportation system. Dignity and respect for the people living outdoors. Additional resources, where'd it go? There we go. Additional resources for the prevention of violence against women. Divestment from fossil fuels. Decentralized banking. Leading the charge on combating climate change. And also strong unions. Making it happen. All of these things and so much more is possible, but what's important is that we need your help. We have a sign-in table over here, and like's been said multiple times throughout the, the program, is that we need your support. We need your support coming out, knocking on doors. Let's have an event in your house. I'd love to come by and have tea with you and your friends. Like, heyo, we can just kick it and talk about politics, it's great. And then your friends, I almost guarantee you, because it happens every time, your friends will wanna have a meeting greet at their house with their friends. And it becomes this cascading kind of flow of like, oh, awaken this politics. I love it. It's one of my favorite experiences of the campaign. Um, so, we're gonna close now, not gonna ask for money. Come volunteer with the campaign. When I win in November, eh, my name is Drew. Run for city council, go for me this November 6th, or use your mail-in ballot. Please sign up and get involved. Otherwise, enjoy some food. I love you all for coming out, and I wanna say one thing, this guy right here by the tree, his name's Jeff, he does silk screening. He's the one that helped us to figure out the silk-screen yard signs. Heyo, let's give a round of applause to Jeff. Thank you, Jeff, and ID of Fab Labs. Also, I have a weekly podcast that comes out. If you're not receiving the newsletter, sign up, you'll get the newsletter. I give updates, we have interviews, there's all kinds of great activities people can get involved with. And, uh, more importantly, have fun. I love this crowd, not only because of your values and your morals, but look around at all the different types of people that are here. Different ages, different races, different perspectives. I love this representation of the community, and this is what the campaign represents: diversity among people, diversity in thought, diversity in engagement, but also diversity in implementation and a positive, forward-thinking agenda. So, without further ado, eat the rest of the food, we're gonna have some music. Thank you so much for coming out, thank you to Curtis, and for everyone else for your support. Uh, we're gonna win this November, right? Yes, exactly. I'll see you later.